Hello, everybody, and thanks for accommodating me, Greg and Joan. And it being six o'clock, we call the RMLD Board of Commissioners meeting to order. And also, as we all know, this is Phil Pacino's last meeting as after, what, thirty-eight years, Phil?
Years, yep.
And so, in honor of Phil's last meeting, I, Phil will run this meeting, and he certainly knows, knows how to do it very well. So, Phil, please take it from here, and with my thanks and everybody's thanks for your many years of service on the RMLD Board.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna bang this one last time. One last time, you wanna call the?
Yeah, so we call the CME meeting.
Okay. So, public comment is the first one.
I have Rebecca Lieberman in the waiting room if you want.
Yep, let her in, please.
Rebecca, you should be all set to talk now.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
We can.
Oh, thanks. Okay, just, I wanted to thank you for your response, but I'm hoping that, that as Erica said, there will be a general RMLD mailbox to email all RMLD Board members at once. She said by April first. I'm gonna hold you guys to that because I've been asking for a long time now. I also wanted to ask whether the minutes of prior meetings could be posted more quickly because of, as of this past Monday, the most recent minutes posted were from August. I was trying to look something up. And then I had a couple more things. I wanted to ask if you could answer the question of how many renewable choice residential and commercial customers we have. Because you know what I'm gonna say, I'm gonna ask again whether a small increase in everybody's bill might make more sense than having a couple, a handful of people paying a lot for renewable choice in order to expand our ability to retire the most polluting power plants and move to greener options. And in that same vein, I would like to know what happened to solar choice and why it seems that we has answered my question about where it went and why it can't come back. More solar, because I know, I know people who would wanna buy into it. And, and then, last but not least, I was signatory on a group letter. I wanted to make sure that you received it and that you are going to answer the questions posed in that letter, including how long those stickers were on the truck and the other questions that I and other concerned community members had, because that was very alarming. Thank you.
Alright, ready to move on? We got the recognition presentation of meter lamps.
Just so everyone knows, we have a response back to all this.
But, yeah.
Right, so, I'm just the emcee here, just to get started, because Phil is going to have a few quick questions.
Yep.
You know, I'm gonna do Dennis's first.
Do Dennis's first, right?
So, first of all, thank you for your service, ten years, Citizen Advisory Board.
Yes.
Member.
Thank you.
And as you guys.
Very well.
I was highlighting the board member element of it. I'm not gonna hold this up, although I could take the top off, but this is, this is our typical meter lamp.
So you're gonna show me Phil's instead of mine?
So I, I'm not gonna lift it up because I don't wanna break the glass, and we have a package delivered. But basically, it is Dennis Kelly, right, two thousand fourteen to two thousand twenty-five Citizens Advisory Board. And this is, this particular one is a residential, it is a working residential meter circa nineteen twenty. And when you do plug it in, the light does come on, and the meter spins.
Nice.
So we are greatly appreciative of all the service. We are gonna miss your professional contributions and your humor.
Excellent, thank you.
So let's do yours up here, and then you can go back, because you, Phil wants to give a little bit of history of the Board of Commissioner. But.
Does that with Once Upon a Time, wasn't it?
So again, it's nineteen eighty-seven, thirty-eight years of service, again, same, the same, same meter lamp, right? This particular one says Phil DiPacino, Board of Commissioners, nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand twenty-five. Yes, I recognize there's a plaque up there. We could put the second date on the plaque up there, because his is way back in the list, and he has no second date, but.
We use that chisel on the hammer like.
So Phil, thank you very, very much. I know the other board members, if they have any comments for either Dennis or Phil, but Phil, after that, Phil wants to walk through a little bit of history.
Yeah, congratulations. Thank you. Alright, so let me just walk through a little bit of history. What I did is, as promised, I put together the chronology of each of the seats here at the board, in terms of what we got. So starting out with the first three, you know, it's interesting, and then it works all the way down as to what I could figure out is to the time periods in each case. So, you know, Henry Robinson, Charles Abbott, and A. Newell Howes were the first three commissioners that served here. And what I can figure out is that, looking at the math, it must have been three, the three-year, two-year term and the one-year term. So, Robinson got a three-year term, Abbott got a two-year term, and Newell got, and Howes got a one-year term, and it goes on down. If I take the first column, there's actually a couple of, there's some gaps in this thing, actually. In the first column, if you go down to Louis Ellenwood, you'll see that he served through fifty-nine, and then Frank Tanner served starting in fifty-one. There's a two-year gap in there somehow, at this point. Frank Tanner, after he served on this board, went on to be a state representative here in Reading. He was a state representative, and now has, Tannerville is named after him. The presence, the present occupant of that is Ray. You had the present seat. And Ray, you should turn around and watch the guy over your shoulder, because he had the seat at one time, so he's always watching over you.
That's scary.
The longest-serving person in that particular line was Alan Ames, who I had the privilege of serving when I first came on the board at this point. In terms of the, the second column, in terms of Charles Abbott, again, the longest-serving person in that one was Henry, Henry Johnson. He served twenty-one years in that, and that just lead up to World War Two, actually, when he served. There's a gap here in this one. If you go to Donald Miller and Phil Wilcox, you can see Donald Miller goes from fifty-three to fifty-six, and Wilcox goes from fifty-four to sixty-two. There's actually, the, the timing on this, there actually looks like there were four commissioners serving at any one time, for three seats. The third, the third one is the one-year one. The two, the, actually, there's three, this actually, many had the longest-serving people. You got George Flint served nineteen years, Herb Evans served twenty-seven, John Crocker served twenty-one. John Crocker was a very interesting individual. He was, he was very authoritarian at this point. And quite frankly, the, the problem with the Wilmington was, he was very much involved in it at this point. He did do one good thing. He did start the pension trust, is what he did. You can also see in here, you have Bill Brown, the Bill Brown. Bill Brown came on here for one year, he was appointed, with the idea he would sell us. Once he got here, he saw what was going on, and he decided that it was not a good idea to sell us, at this point. One of the interesting things in that particular line, you see Robert Sully, third one from the bottom. Bob served two terms, twelve, twelve years. And because he was moving, and he knew he was moving, he, he went over to the first column and actually served a one year in the first column. He, he served a, an interim period, because when Dave Mancuso left the board, Bob served that, the rest of that term at that point. He's the only one that's listed here twice. I'll jump over to the far column. That's in nineteen eighty-seven, the Charter Commission, when they brought the charter in place, they expanded the board to three members to five members, at that point. There's a story with John Crook, if you wanna, I can tell you about with the Charter Commission sometime, if you wanna hear it. But the original person on that, there was two-year terms and a one-year term. Barry Hampson was the first one to serve there, and the present person on that seat is now Pam. Pam now serves in that position. And then, I had the pleasure of running for a two-year term, and which I ran unopposed and served in. The interesting thing is, back in the beginning of time, we had what was known as Dream Team. You had basically Alan Ames, who was very knowledgeable in rate setting. You had Fred Newmigott, who was actually in, in the industry. Fred Newmigott was in the industry. Barry Hampson was an engineer. I was the accountant, and Jim O'Leary was in IT. So we had five different, five different skills we brought to the board, and we were, the manager at the time called us, called us the Dream Team. So, you can see, so basically, the, the original term raised in one seat. Davis got the, the one, the, the Charles Abbott seat. Bob has the, the Howles, the Howles Street. Whoever's, the successor to me will come along, and then Pam has the ones for Barry Hampson. So this is the history. Again, there are a couple of gaps in here that, you know, who knows when there were four commissioners serving at one time, or what the gap was at that point, so. No, I thought it was interesting, kind of putting it all together for everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, and Dennis, thank you for your service.
Phil, this is a lot of work.
I kept it up. Well, over time, I kept it up, you know, and then I looked at the plaque over here. I think I've actually served, I think I've counted like twenty-six different commissioners during my time here.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, wow.
And I've had the pleasure of serving with the five managers. Noah Reinerston, when I got here. Then it was Lynn Rucker, then Vinnie Cameron, then Colleen, and then Greg.
So in nineteen oh one, did, what was Charles Lee like? Oh, we are gonna miss you.
But, you know, I, I think I wanna say about Phil, it's, you know, it's tremendous service here on the board as well, but Phil is just an absolute public servant. You know, it's not just here, it's in the town, then active in the church community, and it's, you know, something you don't always see in everybody, just that selflessness, and I just wanted to mention that about Phil. You know, thank you, great quality.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Yeah, it's hard for me to believe this is my last meeting at times. It hasn't quite, that's, it sunk in a little bit last night after the award ceremony.
Oh, yeah, the award ceremony last night.
It sunk in last night a little bit, so.
We can call another one for Friday if you really want to, Phil. Eight P M.
Now, so why don't we, why don't we move on to item nine, six on the agenda? Comments from Liaisons to the RMLD Boards.
So, yeah, I, I guess this is mostly my, my time roles here. The Home Rule Committee update. There was a meeting on the March third. And essentially, the role of that was to finalize changes to the town charter. There were several sections which we're gonna get final sign-off. They're looking, they had a couple of schedules for which the, when the charter would be approved and then come before, the, has to come before town, not town committee, town meeting. And there was a question of whether or not it also needs to go before a town vote. I think there was some debate about whether that step also has to happen. But they were trying to fit that in, and not to take away from the motion coming up on the Home Rule Charter that the cab is suggesting. And we'll come to that piece, Vivek, when, when we get to that. I'm just sort of reporting out what that committee, meeting is and was, and then we can talk about what we wanna do. But pretty much, there was a vote, one for the town charter with the exception of section three point five. And I voted on behalf of the committee here to approve that piece of the charter excluding section three point five. And then there was a vote on section three point five, which, based on the guidance and vote that we took here, I voted abstain. And that, as far as the actions by the Town Charter Committee, pretty much done. It then will have to go through final review, votes, and then, then approval. There's no requirement that the Home Rule Charter be reviewed again for the next ten years. And I don't see a mechanism by which the, the town of Reading would edit the charter just for section three point five. But if there was another reason that the charter needed to be changed in the next ten years, then it could open up the possibility of, of looking at it then. But I don't read any intent on the part of the Charter Committee to, to make any changes to three point five at this time. Not to say our taking a position and, and putting some guidance out there isn't worthwhile acting on, but it, it, the consequences of that are that if someone tries to go for Phil's record of being on the board, then maybe we'll be here when the next charter comes up. And we'll remember to carry this vote forward, but that's kind of where we are with that. I would defer comments on that to the discussion going forward and making the, talking about the changes. On MLCA is got a, a discussion coming up tomorrow evening. I think most of you have had invitations. I probably knocked the cab, but you certainly no reason why you couldn't attend. And I didn't get here early enough to call up the email that talked about those things, so it would have been an MCL meeting, email, not a.
Um, two thirteen today, there was.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want me to pull that up?
Yeah, if you, if you can do that easily. The, the meeting tomorrow is on the, the home heating requirements, or the, the clean, clean heat requirements. And it is a presentation by members from the DEP to talk about what the rule is. It'll, you could probably get the same information by going to the website, but it's a chance to hear from the authors, you know, what it is. They will probably not expand too much more on, on it other than that, other than presenting. Wakefield Gas and Light Board has put together and submitted a letter saying that, thank you very much, yes, we're in favor of, of converting to heat, but being a municipal light company, we are already responsive to our community, and we're already taking actions to try to promote it. So, being subject to the penalties that that might impose on utilities that aren't responsive only gets taken out, charged against our ratepayers. I mean, there's no profit that we take, so we're not hurting the organization except the ratepayers. So that point of view will probably be discussed at that meeting. By then, the, the EPP might sign off if, if the discussion goes that way, because it's not their, their role at this moment to respond to comment. But I think it's worth hearing about it, and if you, like Phil, sitting at home with no meetings to attend after tonight, that will be it. And just scrub that out quickly, Erica, to things, highlights coming up. We're looking at the depreciation account in April, and I don't wanna say too much more about it, other than coming, features of coming events. And May, we're looking at long-term duration battery storage. Of course, Greg has talked to us about some of that, but not all the municipal light companies have, have been on board with that. The, the main thing I think they wanna look at is, what are the economic drivers for MLB to do that? Because, you know, certainly, moving the peak, a few hours is good, but long-term storage is a different dynamic and the payback. So that will be a focus of that event. So, coming attractions. The other thing I wanna bring up in this point, in, at this time, is Recal had a meeting yesterday. Recal, for those that not familiar with the acronym, is the Reading Continuing Active Life, Center for Active Living, that's center, and they had a meeting yesterday. And they are about ready to put the budget before the town and have approval for that. The building is all electric. They have not included solar panels on it as far as the base cost.
Right.
But they have, I guess, reached out to RMLD, which I encouraged during that meeting.
We've had a discussion already.
And, but I think as far as what more they're gonna do, they're probably not gonna do much more at this point until after the town meeting vote, because once that happens, and the town's committed to moving forward with it, then they'll get into the details of that. What I would challenge RMLD to do is not look at these two projects, Killam and Recal, as two separate projects, but look at that area, that geographic area, as a potential energy generation site. A, look at the, the ice rink, Recal, Killam, and say, how much land area can we get access to? What can we put on there? With enough land area, the economics of doing elevated panels over parking area might be economically feasible. Tying into the heat sink of the ice rink is an interesting dynamic. So, so I would, I would challenge RMLD to look at that. I'm not putting that in, in a form of an instruction, because until the town votes on it, there's, there's nothing to, to do, but I would certainly encourage that. And then finally, the Reading Bike Recycling Event is starting up, and I've reached, been contacted by Betsy on that. And so, we will need to, they will reach out to RMLD. If you haven't, they haven't reached you, Melissa, yet, they will.
For that, yeah.
I'm not sure that there is, is, it'd be in May. Yeah. I think I may be back by then. So, so that's it for my side gigs.
The L A invitation, do we, once the?
Just, just forward it to you.
Oh, okay, I was just gonna say, when the group email is set up, would we be on the distribution through the group email potentially? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, which?
Yeah, okay, so.
Oh, sorry, and if multiple people do wanna attend the meeting tomorrow, please let me know, because, oh.
It is not, is not open meeting, because this is classified as an educational event, and there'd be no crosstalk on, on business to the town. That's, yeah, it already falls under the exemption of open meeting. So, yeah, good point, but, yeah, that. We make a point, we, at the beginning of that, to, to say if there is crosstalk, we'll have to interrupt it. But it's considered training and, and not, not a meeting.
Alright, ready to move on?
Move on.
Okay, so, it'll be in language for the Home Rule Charter, Vivek?
Okay, so, the, the purpose here was that, you know, we've been talking about the role of the cab, and like Dennis has also pointed out several times, the fact that we're doing joint meetings is good. We've been talking about the policies being updated to recognize the role of the cab. And as this whole thing was happening, you know, we, we thought about the, the Home Rule Charter. And I think at the last meeting, we actually passed a motion. We had, we had some language about recognizing the role of the cab in terms of advising RMLD. So we had passed that motion. And then, it was totally disregarded by the B O C at that time, because you guys were focused on addressing the language that you needed to respond to. And so, reflecting on that, you know, I, I felt, and I, I discussed this with Dave also, that it was important to recognize the role of the cab and memorialize that in some way. Gonna do that in terms of the policies. It's shined in the twenty-year agreement. And so then, the question was, you know, should we go ahead and put something in the charter that recognizes the role of the cab? And, you know, when I talked to some people, it seemed like a good idea, okay? And so the idea is basically, we're just saying that the cab has been created, created by the twenty-year agreement. The role of the cab is to advise the, the board on strategy, programs, rates, budgets. Because those affect all four towns. And that the cab will recommend to the, the Board of Commissioners what, when the rates have to be set, okay? So, 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 so there were three places in section three point five that I pointed out, we could make changes. Three point five could be called cab, you know, municipal light board and cab. Recognize the role of the, that the cab exists, and then that the cab advises the rate setting, okay? So that was the purpose, and so it kind of incorporates language for the chart. And I'd like to understand how, and I've had advice recently from Phil also. And so, so one thing, Ray, you are saying that nothing's gonna happen for ten years.
Well, nothing will happen.
Unless something extraordinary.
Unless something else drives it. I don't see them opening it up for three point five.
Yeah.
And, and it's, I am in complete agreement with you on everything you just said, and, and recognizing the role of cab is important, and I would support that. I'm just reflecting what Phil already knows. It's, it's just not an interest in doing anything to the language.
So, so, so my question to you guys is that, how, how do you think we should proceed on this?
I mean, looking back at the, the past eleven years, when I first got on the committee, the cab might as well have not existed. We didn't get all the same information. We didn't get treated the same. I give a lot of respect to the board that exists today. As the cab has changed and members and things have moved, by making it a joint meeting, there's a lot more interaction, there's a lot more involvement. We, we're involved more in every aspect of what the board's seeing, which is important. So I, I would suggest that the joint meetings never stop. And it gives the cab a true voice. We exist in the twenty-year agreement, which is a solid agreement between the different towns. So it brings us to the ability of having input and, and, you know, advising the board. So I think, in that, in that sense, I think we have what we want, but without the joint meetings, I really think it was a disconnect and didn't have any value from a cab. I truly don't. So I think sticking with the joint meetings and the cab being vocal and sharing their opinions and experiences really makes it a, a true advisory board and, and have input. So I think you have everything you want, as long as the board and management see it the same way. But it's always in the twenty-year agreement, we always suggest, and it's the, based on my past experience, it's the effort you put into it or the, the, the energy you say in your opinions to make sure they're heard, and that's what the cab has to do.
Jason?
And I feel the same as Dennis. I feel like if the charter is wrapped up and it's not gonna get opened in ten years, we should try to save this somewhere, so when it does get opened up again, we can kind of get it in there. But I think doing this, it's not gonna go anywhere for ten years, so, but it's good, it's, I like how it's written. I could set up the next time. But, yeah, I think as long as, like Dennis said, the joint meetings are a lot more, we have a lot more voice when we do that. So right now, the way it's existing, I think, is a good spot. But I don't know how the town charter is going, if there are any documents.
Well, there's nothing in the charter that, that says you can't be a joint meeting. It doesn't affect your role here at all. And while I support the, and I don't wanna interrupt your, pulling your own team, but support documenting that, but it doesn't change your role here, and, and the role is however we do it. It, it doesn't exclude you.
No, no, just, just to follow the open meeting law. This is something I didn't get to discuss with folks outside this meeting, so this is being discussed purely.
Yeah, no, I hear you, yeah.
So this is just pure process.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so Tim, any thoughts?
Well, it's a logical step to have us recognized and put us in there legally. Because right now, it's, the board accepts us, and they all say, oh, you guys do a nice job and everything, but reality, they could just put a wall up and not listen to us. And. And um, you know, we advise and we say stuff, but the power lies in you guys, which is the way it should be, but we should also have somewhat of an input, because we represent towns and and people do come up to me and ask questions. Oh, I heard you're on the board. What about this? And they make them up to Jason and he brings certain viewpoints and everything. So I just, it's it's one thing to be theoretical, oh, you guys do a great job, and it's another one to be legally bound in language. That's the only thing.
Yeah, I I know you had some.
Yeah, so so I mean, here's my thought. I lived through the two votes that the Wilmington Wilmington took to withdraw from the from the from the RMLD back in when I first came on the board. Uh that would have been, there would have been losers for everybody in that case, the rate payers. So the perception was is that Wilmington's view was that the RMLD was being run for the benefit of Reading. And that's why I see putting it into the town charter. I mean, we're all, we're all getting a great bunch of grade here. But, you know, I'm not going to be here next month, you know? Dennis is not going to be here next month, you know? So we have to avoid the perception that the department is running for the benefit of Reading. And there are people who are downtown that believe that this is Reading's light department, it should be run for the benefit of Reading. And so that's why I think it's a very bad idea to put this in the town charter, because that gives them an opportunity to potentially change things. I mean, we've got things, Ray knows, we have things that are that are converted to section one sixty, chapter one sixty four. They could do the same thing to the C A B. Uh you know, so that's why I I don't think it's a good idea to put this into the the Reading Town Charter. It's a perception, perception is my concern.
Isn't there, in our last discussion, so it's also a state law that came and was superseding all of this anyways, correct?
Yes, so we we operate under this chap- chapter one sixty four. We don't really follow what's in the charter.
But even that doesn't dictate anything about the Citizens Advisory Board, because every municipal light plant in the state runs under chapter one sixty four.
They don't have us.
So right, so there's not, it is only a handful of municipals that serve multiple towns, right? So address that, but I would argue the twenty year agreement, which is signed by the four towns, which was put forth by the Department of Public Utilities. If Reading starts to try to, if what you say, if we put them in the in the charter and they start to try to take control and say it's for the benefit of Reading, we can go right back to the D P U, bring them right back in here. And I don't think anybody would want that, and I don't think Reading would want that. And I think, but I see Phil's point and and I also think this wouldn't happen now anyways, it's too far along. So I think we document what we want, and then it's there in ten years if anyone wants to use it.
No, no, so so the question is, if we document means we actually approve a motion? Okay.
I don't just think that, I mean, this gets in the minutes, we get this into the minutes, it's documented.
In the minutes, it'll be in the minutes.
In the minutes.
That's in the board package.
Attachment will be saved for the minutes too, so we'll have it all together.
Right.
So it's still documented, it's, I don't know, so I think you need a motion for that.
Right.
I think the motion would be more in play when the duck chart is actually opened.
That's right.
Where things will be ten years from now.
Okay, so Tim would be comfortable with that, so.
All you have to do is pick up the phone, call the D P U again.
Yeah.
We're back in.
But basically, a motion of no action. But it's on file as far as minutes and everything else.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, so we'll make sure that the policy is properly covered. Yeah, probably, yes.
It did take almost a year and a half to solve the the dispute with the town of Wilmington. You know, the manager myself met with two representatives from Wilmington for a year and a half to get that agreement in place. So anyway. So we move on to the minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the minutes, okay? I think you're up first, and the the C A B is up first in the minutes.
So can I get a motion?
Uh move that the RMLD Assistant Advisory Board approved the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, the October twenty second, twenty twenty four, November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, and November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
So.
Okay, and and then we can have a discussion and then, I mean, you guys can also have a motion, you can have a motion.
No, you could, you could use first.
Wrong, yeah.
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 Any discussion?
I'm good, I'm good.
No, I I had some comments which I which we're incorporating.
Okay.
So we are on what? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, do you have a motion on the commission side?
Uh move that the RMLD Board of Commissioners approve the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, October twenty second, twenty twenty four, November thirteenth, twenty twenty four, November twenty sixth, twenty twenty four, open session meeting minutes as presented on the recommendation of the General Manager and the Board Secretary.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? All the favor raised right here, say hi. Okay, we move on to the uh the email update, group email.
I'll I'll be quick on that one. Uh you guys, that reminder email today, I know some of you, um in the next couple of days will check in with us to make sure that whatever help we need to give you. Thank you for those that have got already done. April first, we'll transition over to uh RMLD emails. If you have any questions, just reach out to us. Um I think Eric has got the latest email, so thank you, guys. That's it for that one. And obviously, you guys heard that there's a uh request to uh from the public to do that as well. So for all good reasons, we'll we'll get it done. So thank you. Do you want me to jump to the next topic?
Keep going, just keep going.
Great. Okay, so next topic is green communities. We talked very briefly about this. And the uh the Green Communities Program is really a town program. In our particular case, as we just discussed, uh we are unique as RMLD. There's actually legislation um that is specific to RMLD only, um that references the twenty year agreement. You just want, do you want me to put it in, uh if you put it in? So I'll I'll make this real quick. The role of um RMLD in the program is simply to collect the um, are you ready? Is to collect the funds. Again, this is a a town of Reading program. Town of Lynnfield is interested in particularly potentially joining it. The town of Wilmington is potentially looking at it um as well, but it is done on a town by town basis. This is not an RMLD program. RMLD's role is only as an administrator to collect the funds and forward those funds to the trust, uh which is a Commonwealth Trust. That's our only role. We don't take any margin on it, we don't take any processing fees, we simply collect it. We um this uh Green Communities Program um has been in process with the town of Reading, we and RMLD is very supportive of it. But it's been in process for several years now. One of the things that we needed to do was to update our billing system to allow only um town, uh only some meters in the town of Reading, residential uh commercial, industrial, et cetera. So all the ones in the town of Reading um get billed, it's a very small amount. And again, our process is, our role is simply to process. So the select board, um again, the select board uh is going to be processing, having a discussion next Tuesday night and then making the final opinion or their final decision on uh April twenty second. Um at that point, um we we as RMLD actually end up executing the agreement with the 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 trust. Uh we have a second, we have a side letter that we executed with the town of Reading, recognizing that if the town of Ready Ready decides to exit the program, they're responsible for any exit fees. And the reason why that's important is that that exit fee, if 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 it ever happens, would not be borne by the other three towns. So all a pretty simple program. It's just a quick update. Uh again, from an RMLD perspective, we are typically collecting and forwarding uh funds on it, we're able to do that. Yes, Rebecca.
So you said four or five criteria, which is the fifth, is is that number three?
Uh in terms of the town of Reading?
Yeah.
Uh so again, this is a town of Reading program, not our program. Uh they have, they have drafted a stretch code. Um yeah, I think the three is the only one that's open. Um but that's not a trivial that reduces energy consumption by by twenty percent within five years. So that's in process, that's why it's not completed. Our fleet of vehicles also rolls because we are operating in the town. Our vehicles are part of that vehicle program number four as well.
So it's down assets.
It's it's asked, it's uh yes, again, this is, this is where we get into the murky area of RMLD um being associated with the town of Reading, but we operate autonomously from the town of Reading. But yes, from from the, from the uh Green Communities Program, our fleet gets included and our buildings get included in the town's uh reporting structure. Yeah, go ahead.
Specifically, fuel efficient vehicles, what is the measurement there? We are hundred percent.
Oh, there's, no, there's, there's a, um there's not never a hundred percent, the heavy duty trucks are excluded.
Okay.
It's it's a lighter duty vehicles, there's a whole, there's a, the whole big program on this, I can market.
I'm just, yeah, because the energy reduction is clear, twenty percent in five years with the fuel. No, I, yeah, I got you, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
There's.
It's a very, it's like ninety, so I have up there, yes, like ninety percent of the of the communities in Massachusetts are part of the program. And the reason to be part of the program, well, there's a whole bunch of reasons, but it's a energy efficiency type program, back to the theme that we've been talking about all along. Um but also part of that, if they get the trust, those funds that we collect from just the town of Reading, they go into a fund from which grants can be applied for uh and and used for energy efficiency type programs.
One other question, but I kind of jumped ahead of the next slide. Role of RMLD, specifically to the twenty percent energy production, we talked about the camp, the campus and the vehicle fleet. How will time of use A M I, how could that help with the energy reduction? Is that, is it just town buildings or is it just town as a whole residential?
I have, I, that's been, it's um, it's, I think it's just the town building.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not even saying, yeah.
That's why I have, it's down assets, so it's down.
Okay.
Town assets is the right way to say it. Um the the art, anyways, it's a long story. But yes, we we get, at the end of the day, we get rolled into it. So our vehicles are part of it and we're.
Right, okay, but specifically the
Located in Reading.
Nothing's going to be applicable to any town of Reading assets.
Well, except they will, they can participate in that.
Kind of my point, yeah, so.
How many uses shifting peaks doesn't necessarily reduce kilowatt hour usage, okay, mind.
It's like garbage tonnage, the same garbage tonnage, no matter, no matter how you package it, it's the same kilowatt hour, it only goes this way, doesn't go this way. One thing about utilities, right, utilities, from what I understand, they are trying to drive an exception for utility vehicles, because they're emergency response vehicles.
Oh, we already, there are already some exceptions already.
Yeah, I, and I know that that they they need to be held.
And this is different from the comp, this is different from the state program, which is a, which is still in play.
Correct. So so I I think that that should always be maintained, that flexibility, because again, even though you could say I have an E V charged vehicle, if I can't roll the vehicle to restore power, it's kind of in those ironic situations, correct? So thi- this fleet may be one hundred percent exempt from that to maintain that reading this ability to restore all the time, twenty four seven, three sixty five. So uh I I just, I I so when we look at our fleet, that that can be different, you know, some vehicles, yes, but not all.
Town of Wilmington has the same thing with the um snowplow trucks.
Yeah.
You know, because you can't snowplow twenty four hours, so you're going to plow for a little while, go charge, so you have to double the fleet in order to try to make exceptions.
Yeah.
As of right now, but it, because they can't create a vehicle that could do that. Public health and safety, you need it.
So just as, just a quick update in terms of where we are in the process. Um so we're, and again, as RMLD, we're happy to 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 process um the payments. And there's, it should be fine unless at some point in time in the future, um the town of Reading, if 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 anyways, that's enough on that one. Any questions? Or further discussion? Great, we'll jump right to the next topic.
Go to the next. I R D.
Good evening. So there are two parts to our I R D update today. Uh the first part, I'll talk about our new heat pump incentive program. And the first RMLD greenhouse gas emissions inventory, and then we'll discuss the G M goal number K, that's the update that Bill explained on the website. And then we have a special guest today, Melissa Nolly is uh our Marketing Manager on the I R D team. And she'll discuss the G M goal number J about the communications audit and recommendations. She'll also introduce our brand new logo. So I will start with throw with our new content, I think we mentioned this um last time, so these are some highlights. Basically, we um, the old program has uh a incentive based on tonnage, and then weatherization was an optional choice that we would give additional incentive if the customers choose to do that. And then the new program um is now the most of three choices. Uh the first one is for the whole house, you do, you you kind of install heat pump that can cover the, you know, the entire house, the area of the house, and then, you know, kind of, you have to reach certain percentage of the heating load of of the, for designing the, you know, the 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 house, uh the heating and cooling needs. And then the second choice is also for the whole house, but um we work with the local bank, the Reading Corporate Bank. So we are offering zero interest loan on the heat pump installation. And the third choice is just a revision of the old program where these incentive is still based on tonnage, but we lowered the incentive cap because we want to encourage the whole house uh conversion to heat pumps. And there are few uh innovations, we believe, uh to this program. The first one is for all three choices, no matter what you do, if you want to participate in our heat pump program, you have to do weatherization. There are certain kind of detailed criteria, I'm not going to kind of deal over that here, but but that's the first kind of biggest change to the program. And the second part is just the collaboration with both our uh heat pump program vendor and the local uh the Reading Corporate Bank. We just actually had a very um good um kickoff event two weeks ago with the, at the bank. Uh customers and contractors all came and asked very specific questions. So and then the last piece, um which is kind of, you don't see it on the surface, but this is what we have experienced as as our M O T a team to kind of manage the program where in in the past, most of these incentive programs were handled by the customers, contractors, not the customers themselves. But now we're really ramping up our outreach, education, marketing and communications efforts. We want to bring the customers back. They need to be educated on the money that they're spending, a lot of money that's spending to upgrade their their system. So we want the customers to fill out the application, the customers to call a a boat is our uh heat pump vendor to to understand what they're doing. So this is the other piece that I feel will really kind of engage our customers more and then kind of also try to weed out some of the not so good contractors who are just like, you know, they they get to, they get paid by the customers, but they're not motivated to actually, you know, help the customers to gather revenue from RMLD. So that's that a piece. And then a little bit of update, um it's been two and a half, three, three weeks since the start of the program, we've had close to forty increase. Uh and then people are starting to kind of talk to their contractors and start to put the applications in. So, yeah.
So is, is it on new uh installations after March fifth, twenty twenty five? What's, what's?
Yes.
What's the time period? Okay, yeah, they cut off. And so for anything prior to that, it was the old program?
So if they want to transition, like switch to the new program, they can, but there are the additional requirements. So if they want to meet those requirements, they can switch over.
So one question, I know you mentioned weatherization, I know there is a but it's tied into a heat pump. Weatherization standalone is often a question, that's probably one of the biggest questions that I get, you know, it's that 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 weatherization, it that similar to Massa, that is something that people want, maybe they don't want to convert to the heat pump, but they want the weatherization, so there's a
Yeah, we we have this, we had this discussion multiple times, so
Yes.
First of all, we are just an electric utility. Um so uh so what what we want, kind of the the kind of the change of behavior from customers to like electrify. So that's why weatherization is tied into the heat pump program. And if they only want to do weatherization, um the, I think in our territory, the only gas company is National Grid. They have their weatherization program, so they can definitely work with them to to, if they only want to do that, if they don't want to convert to heat pump. So we feel like the two programs are covering
Not all. More than half the town.
It definitely makes sense.
We did do the survey, so fifty percent are natural gas, forty eight percent are oil, and then the other two percent are electric. So about half of them, yeah.
Half the town is not covered by gas, so.
That's correct.
Have, and I don't know Wilmington in, in North Reading or how much gas is located in, in Linfield, I know there's some, but. There's a decent amount of customers that weatherization is beneficial, because a lot of homes were built in the, you know. Seventies and eighties, but, but, you know, they were all electric and, you know, insulation.
Requiring it, could you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this is a great change to require the weatherization with heat pumps, so thank you for making the change. I noticed when approving the rebate warrant that none of the, at least the month that I was looking. None of the people were taking weatherization, it was just not, not being used, so it's great to make it mandatory. Um, on Bob's question about offering weatherization as a standalone. Um, I think some of, some other M L Ps do offer that, I think Wakefield is one where you can get. Some weatherization, uh, help even without doing heat pumps, so. Okay, but I mean, okay, but there's still an M L P.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, but that's, but they're not part of Mass Saves anymore than we are, right? So they're not, so they're, right, so they're not part of Mass Saves, we're not part of Mass Saves, of course, but, but they're not the only one, I think Hingham and some others, um. I started taking a look, I haven't done a comprehensive review, but there are, there are M L Ps who do offer things like, uh, even for windows. And, um, you know, a little bit towards replacement windows, which is not connected to heat pumps or anything, so. What, what would be required for R M L D to join those M L Ps that do offer weatherization, like? A board vote, uh, after some, you know, thinking and planning or asking you to do this, or, or what would be required?
Um, so we've, um, good question, Dave, we've, we've looked at, we've had this discussion in the past, and again, this is rate payer money. So the real question is, do we want to take rate payer money away from other program, but other uses of the program? And put it toward weatherization, um, we could do some analysis and, and make a recommendation to you at, at probably the next one or two meetings. Um, doesn't necessarily need a, a vote, but we'll certainly do the analysis and make a recommendation and then have a discussion.
Sure, well, but on that point, though, last year, uh, there was a three million dollar available for energy efficiency and, uh. I think I heard you say last meeting that a million of it just, just didn't get spent at all, right?
No, I, uh.
Or was it less than that?
No, we, so, um. We actually had to supplement the program maybe two, three years ago with some reserves.
Okay.
We got like that, that cushion of the reserve in the fund, it's not that we didn't get to spend it, because we, we kind of purposefully leave that reserve.
Oh, okay, did I miss, miss here then from a, a meeting or two ago, I thought there was a significant underspending of the, of the energy efficiency fund. Last year, is that not correct?
Yeah.
It was, I, I think I also, I heard it the same way as what Dave heard.
Okay, so I think it was, maybe it was mentioned that for the commercial and industrial sector, it was way underspent. But both sectors are put into the same pool. If, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Like, so we have much more participation than C and I participate.
Right, I guess, for, I guess the first thing I would want is to see, you know, what is the data, like, how, to what extent are we spending the full? Three million or whatever the amount is every year, and to what extent are we oversubscribed and, and we can't satisfy people's requests? And to what extent are we underspending it, and maybe seeing that for the last three or four years, so we understand utilization. At, at, as a big picture, and then under that is what are the, what are the buckets that the money is getting spent in? So that we can see how it's being used now, because the, the, the spirit of the thing was always efficiency, and I know electrification is also important. But, you know, as Bob said, people do ask for the weatherization and, and it's an energy efficiency fund, is what it says on the bill, I think, right? It's a half a cent.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right, so I mean, customers are seeing on their bills that it's half a cent or whatever per kilowatt hour for efficiency, so. And I, I, I suspect that a lot of it is being spent on, you know, heat, you know, electrification, uh, like car chargers and, uh, heat pumps. Which I'm glad the heat pumps now is requiring weatherization, but I guess, yeah, it would be good at the next meeting to just see what those numbers are of utilization. Oversp, is it overspent, is it underspent, and what are the buckets, how much is on solar generation, how much is on? Appliance rebates, although I see that a lot of the appliances have been taken off, and how much is on heat pumps and so on, that would be, that would be a useful starting point. If, if, if possible, the next meeting, wouldn't take long, I wouldn't think.
We can do it, let's do it at the May meeting rather than the April meeting, but yeah, happy to do it.
Yeah, just, just, you know, a lot of times I hate to say this, but rich people's Tesla's job is aren't really efficiency for me, right?
I, I would agree with that wholeheartedly.
That, 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 that's. Well, that's what we fund a lot, but that.
Yeah, we do fund a lot of that, and, you know, people could use some insulation in their attic for five hundred dollars and save. A lot for the rest of the time they own their house, and.
Yeah.
To me, we should be doing that.
Not a problem.
Yeah, yeah, if we could add, you know, potentially and add of a, of a low cost loan program.
Exactly.
Now, if we cannot use the, use that for, you know, not just solely use it, but if you could use it for.
Actually, on that point, and Jason.
By point, it's the, the heat pumps, yes, that's electrification, but they're also more efficient than your oil burner, so there is efficiency component, especially when you couple it down with. Doing the, um. Putting in the, all the insulation, that makes your heat pump even more efficient, so it is all efficiency and electrification by doing the. With the.
You're, you're, you're right, Jason, I guess, though, it's, it depends, it's gonna depend on each case and. Um, you know, electricity, if it's coming from fossil fuels, you have to deal with what's the percentage at the power plant of the fossil fuel being turned into electricity. Um, and every incremental load growth right now is fossil.
Well, 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 that, so in the May meeting, we'll have some real civic data to walk you through this exact topic.
Just weatherization, home heated by oil, I don't know if it's the best use for electric companies' funds, because. It's all it's doing is reducing somebody's oil usage and some oil company, it's not actually helping the electric company. Or grow their customer base.
But you have a.
Yeah. Fair point.
Your house is cold, right, so I, we can go around, but, but, yeah, I know.
But those people might be turning on space heaters, you know, at, at peak times too, because if their house is, is very drafty. And it's two degrees outside and we're putting out peak warnings on those cold winter nights. And, you know, if their house is insulated, maybe you'd get less of that peak, I don't know, I'm just.
Well, well.
Just thinking.
Yep, that's good, it, it's a good discussion, so we'll, we'll provide some data at the May, May meeting, at the May meeting. And we will provide a recommendation on weatherization as well, and we'll have a discussion and then decide if we make a change going forward.
I, I have a few more questions on this, if you don't mind, sorry to drag this on. One is, I just want to get a sense of this forty thousand and the eight thousand, what's the typical size of this program, because, you know, what is? How much are people spending?
Yeah, yeah.
And so I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, size the forty thousand and the.
Yes, for typical house, it's three to four tons. And the old program, most people get between one and three tons. Um, and so the, what they spend on three tons, it's about thirty thousand. Depends on the, the brand or the vendor they, they choose, thirty to thirty to fifty.
Okay.
Depends.
So, so they're spending up to about thirty thousand, and then the loan can go up to forty thousand.
Okay, the, the loan cannot be more than. The total cap, cost.
And, and for the loan, what is the incentive for the bank, are we subsidizing it for the bank?
We're subsidizing the interest.
How, how much are we subsidizing all of it?
Because this is your interest for the customers.
So we are eating the, the cost of interest for.
Instead of the cash rebate, so the point, what we basically, the point of the program is we historically have offered a cash rebate. And again, trying to make it more broadly, uh, available to other customers, we gave them an option if they want to, that we take that same amount. Or a similar amount, and we basically apply it to pay down the interest.
So, so you do, the, the amount of rebates would go to a certain amount, and you'll stop.
Correct.
Once you run out of money.
Well, we put a limit on each project.
Okay.
And, and that's, that's how we, basically the way we manage it is by putting a limit on each project, we, all we really have done here.
There's a cap, there's a cap on the total amount also, right?
Yes.
Cap on there.
Well, there's, there's a, there's a limit in terms of how much money we ultimately will spend, yes, but, um. And that goes back to, we had that problem three years ago, but I think what you, it's important to understand that what we've done here, that there's two main changes here. One is to give an option of either the cash rebate or. The, the low, the no interest loan.
Okay. And what's the role of a board?
Excuse me?
A board?
Uh, they are the technical advisor, so there are a lot of technical details in installing heat pumps and doing, eh, and doing weatherization. So they are our first stop, uh, for the customers to do a free.
So, so, so it's a free consultation.
Yep.
To the customer?
Yep.
And then do they make any money from the customer?
Uh, we pay them a service fee.
Okay, so we pay a board also.
To process, yeah, to be the expert.
To advise the customer.
Also maintains and updates a list of approved, uh, vendors, so that the customers don't have to go out, you know. Ri- risk getting on the risk.
Thank you.
It's been, the, the abode relation's been around for.
Yeah, no, I, I've talked to them, I've talked to them, so.
Good profession group. Okay, so we've done that, so, we move on?
No, uh, you have more on a different topic, right?
Yeah.
Um, okay. No changes to any solar incentive.
Not yet.
Okay, but coming, coming soon. Okay.
Well, we really discussed the budget versus actual in May.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we can have a discussion. Um, the R M O D greenhouse gas emissions inventory, so we finally did it. Thanks, uh, to Rebecca who was kind of pushing us to do it, and we want to do it too, so now we did it. Um, a little discussing the methodologies, we, uh, we did scope one and scope two, we decided not to scope three, the D E P doesn't really do it anyway. Uh, scope one is the direct emissions from the fuse that R M D owned, uh, equipment and assets. So that means like the heating cooling in the buildings and the electricity, oh, well, actually, the electricity is a different, uh, 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 question. And then the vehicle, uh, the, the fuel use of the vehicles, those, those are the two kind of main parts of it. Um, but electricity, we did, um, calculate the usage, but because electricity is provided by ourselves. So that's kind of wrapped into the scope two emissions, so in the inventory, because the official way of doing the inventory. We don't really report that, but we track that just so that for our own facilities, we want to be more efficient and use less electricity as well. And then for scope two, that's indirect emissions, mostly it's pow, power we purchased for our customers. And this inventory has already been done, um, but with, uh, for. You know, with the D E P, because they said the emission factors, and we have to submit the data to the D E P and the B P U. So that is already done, we just took that data as part of this inventory, and then we collect the data for two. Since two thousand twenty two, but because scope two emissions has a two year lag. So the most recent day and year for the inventory is two thousand twenty two, so next year when we update you, it will be the two thousand twenty three emissions. Um, the total emissions I listed here, it really, you know, it wouldn't make sense. Unless you put in the context of something, but we, we are like a, I think it's like a quarter of a percent of the state total emission, something like that.
So here you report short tons, can we just report metric tons?
Right, the second one is metric.
Yeah, no, I know, so because further down also you report short tons.
Yeah, because the, the way the E P reports is, is also short tons, I know, I know, I, I know the standard way is metric tons.
At least in the annual report, the idea was in the annual report at.
Yes, it will be.
It's just, just metric, metric tons, because that'll be consistent, because that'll be one carbon credits.
Sure. Yep. Okay, so scope one, as I explained earlier, it's fleet heating cooling, and you know, the, the three sort of the. And then one piece I want to kind of include, um, kind of highlight here is the generator. We all, we do all a natural gas fired generator, we use exclusively to shake, uh, shave peak. So, um, you know, even though we don't include it in the inventory itself. Shaving peak can have some effects on reducing, you know, the demand and energy and reducing emissions, but because accounting is not done that way. I just want to kind of mention that, but it's not part of the inventory, so its emissions are included. And then scope two is the majority of our inventory, um, you can see, you know. But this is consistent, the emission, emissions calculation is consistent with, you know, how, you know, how our power supply portfolio has changed. So since two thousand twenty, at least, we significantly increased the non emitting sources in our power portfolio, so you can see that. Kind of that trend.
That, that, that's a good chart, this is good chart.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and then again, the, you know, the emission factors are set by the state, by D E P, so twenty twenty one got increased. Mostly, I, I look at the math, mostly it's from the emission factors of the whole state.
Yeah, no, because I think the logic here was, you know, we talk about percentage non carbon.
Hmm.
In the mix, right, so in twenty twenty one, could, if you could map, what was the percentage non carbon? For each of those, that would be helpful, because in twenty twenty one. Was there a change, because today, today it's fifty five, right?
Yes.
Today it's fifty five percent.
Yeah.
What was it last year, it was twenty four?
Twenty twenty was twenty percent.
Less than thirty, I think.
But, so he wants to know what our retirement rate.
Yeah.
They were, they were all less than thirty, yeah, but they.
Yeah.
By twenty, twenty twenty three, so.
So, so I think.
Retirement rate, and then there's portfolio, but if you want to talk about retirement rate, we moved up to twenty twenty.
So, so whatever the retirement rate is, I think it'll be good to show that.
We could, we could do some sort of.
Yeah, we can include that in, in reported, I, I will just have to figure out where to put that.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we have a compliance, uh, section for the report. Um.
Yeah, because, because, because what's significant is we're going from one seventy down to one fifty two or something here, that's what. This, so that's a good save, and then as we go for the, it should get lower, it should get lower.
Yes.
Okay, just to, this is my younger brother Jack who just came in.
Well, we're gonna finish our business and then move to the celebration. Much younger?
I was thinking that, but I wasn't gonna say, thank you for saying it.
We're gonna miss you, Dennis.
But, thank you, Ma- Megan, thank you, this is, this is exactly, because this is really good, because. It, it's really important to recognize that, you know, we do have a carbon footprint, and we, reporting on that is good.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. But we got it done, okay, uh, last topic for me, uh, the G M goal number K is, um, just. Based on some specific feedback from customers and the board members, we did update the understanding your bill page. Um, here's the summary of the main changes, we divide, because there are quite a few different charges. We divide them into three categories, the standard charges, additional bill credits and discounts, so that's kind of, that, you know, the reduction on their bill. And then additional charges, and then we, the, the kind of, the only piece to highlight is, you know. Last time, we discussed, you know, how, what customers can do to reduce their u- usage and reduce their bill. The only thing they cannot reduce is customer charge, we just want to clarify that, although that's a small piece of the bill. And then the third, the third kind of highlight is, is we kind of beefed up the explanation of what you can do to reduce your bill. Or to use more renewable energy to the, to the point. That's the, uh, uh, the, Mr. Rebecca, just, just mentioned. You know, when you want to use more renewable energy, you actually have an additional charge, so we explain that as well. So here, I'm not gonna go over this, you can go on the website.
I think, I think is it, is it a fifteen percent discount as applied?
Yeah.
Fifteen percent to, to non past the lines. One part. Yeah, we don't do it to power spike, because no.
So these are just screenshots of what we did, and we have explanation on the webpage, and then we produce the PDF where it's kind of has that. Bill background, because some people, they may not know, you know, you know, how, how each item of the bill corresponds to their actual bill. So we did this for, for the customer, that's it, no question. All right, album.
Thank you.
Go to the next item, smarting.
Thanks for having me, um, am I the only thing between us and the celebration?
I need one minute.
Um, thank you guys for having me, I'm really excited to be here, um, I've been here just over six months, and it's been a really, really busy, uh. and it's been a really, really busy, um, these guys jumped me right in, um, day one. There's a lot to be done, so I'll go through quickly and I'll pause at different points, if obviously a good questions. Um, so basically, coming right out of the gate, I really wanted to double down on our core tenet of providing our customers the reliable low cost and increasingly non-carbon energy that we push forward. Um, we want to make sure that's really clear and that we are a trusted source for them, that we are a community member in all four communities, that we are the place to go to ask questions, to get resources, to have um interactions, not just myself, but you know, that they feel open to coming to R M L D. Since I've been here, I've seen a wonderfully invested customer base. People call, they comment, they talk, it's, it's, it's amazing, it's unlike I've ever seen in, in my career, so really exciting. Um, one of the things that working with Megan and Greg from the outset was to really dig into our marketing goals and how we were gonna approach them. Um, some of the main um initial goals we had and heading out of Q four for twenty twenty-four and into Q one for twenty twenty-five were to really look at how we're promoting electrification and that clean energy adoption. Um, to look at our brand and decide how we wanna be seen out in the world as R M L D for all of the communities. We wanna be a brand and impression that, you know, makes people excited, makes them feel like that we're modern and moving forward. Um, we wanna increase that awareness and reputation, um, both in our one-to-ones with customers and in the greater New England area. Um, we wanna foster that engagement and relationship building, um, you know, attending events and meeting people, and that's a big part of this. Last night was amazing, um, as we, as we've mentioned, and just, you know, building on that, that wonderful rapport that we have. Um, and then a, a key part of what the, what we wanna do out in the world is gonna be fostering those state and federal government relations. So starting that conversation, um, and those in-persons. We wanna really make sure, make sure that we're engaging those customers consistently, that's been part of it, having, you know, kind of the slow year that we had last year with some of the marketing communications, making sure that we committed a pace that we can stay consistent with, um, and that folks don't see lapses from us, that they see a continual nice flow. Um, we wanna make sure that we're dele- delivering our messages in a customer-centered format, that's really important for me um, to make sure that we're not speaking R M L D speak, but that we're getting to our customer level, making sure that they're understanding the messages that we're putting out and the resources that we have for them. And then evolving, not, you know, uh, we say things like a, a marketing campaign or website is never done. We need to keep moving forward and keep changing and addressing the issues that the customers bring forward and that we see and that we can push out. So with that, I will move into the audit and the recommendations that we did coming into. Um, so again, looking back on six months, we looked at some key areas of outreach. It's a lot of little data in here, but, and you guys all have the slides, so I will put, um, touch over some high points and leave someone for questions. Um, but we looked at the email that we were putting out prior to my arrival and then what we did over um, the six months that I've been here. Um, you know, over a hundred thousand emails sent out, we have amazing open rates and solid click rates. I think we can improve on that a little bit, and I wanna note that our peak alerts go out without much cli- click prompts, and there's quite a few of them, so that lowers our click rate. So that's kind of not a true representation, if I pull things like our newsletters and our welcome emails, we have fairly high click rates in the above two percent, which is uh beyond an industry standard. Um, we, our top clicks are traditionally things like rebates, our new programs announces, E V programs, and we have very low bounce, bounce rates, one of the first thing we did when I came on was clean through some, um, some non-responsive emails and make sure that our list was, was active and, and hitting. Um, the recommendations coming out of that first push and knowing that we had such a solid, solid email base was to get some things done. We reimagined the newsletter, you'll see some of the italic items or things that are either completed or in process. Um, we introduced that automatic welcome series, so as soon as within the first month of enrolling customers, they get an automated welcome email that gives them some resources like how to pay their bill, um, links to um programs, uh prompts them to sign up for peak alerts, shares our social media, et cetera. Um, we wanted to rebrand and restart the peak alerts, make sure that they were hitting on social media and in email right away and consistently. Um, and we wanted to introduce some event ba- event-based and timely email pushes, the heat pump loan is a great example of pushing that out. We just recently did some pushes with um the art contests as well, and we get great responses from those. Um, moving on to social media, we have a fairly small social following on Facebook and we use our X platform specifically for outage, we don't do any um social like or more fun social posts on there. Um, so one of my key goals in the next couple of months, we'll be looking for ways to incre- increase some of our follows on Facebook, because it is a great tool for us. Um, but we do have good engagement when we're on there, we do hear from folks that, that things are um getting seen, we have a decent reach. Um, and we do get some good clicks for stuff like our programs. Um, one of my main, there hadn't been a lot of social being done in the absence of a marketing person. So getting a consistent monthly contact stream, maximizing photos and other things that get better views. Um, one of my initial goals, aligning the brand a little bit more, um, and moving forward, we're gonna look at drafting an S O P and some formal social plans, promoting some more following, um, and exploring additional platforms. Um, as you see, we'll mention things like segmentation studies, et cetera. We wanna start to expand as our audience gets older, generations come more into platforms like Instagram and others might be something we wanna explore. And then moving on to events, um, I came a big, I think probably day two, it was, hey, we have Power Week and you have to plan it, it was lovely, no, it was amazing. Um, I'll talk about that a little bit more in depth in a future slide, but um, you know, be, being able to come back in and really restart some of the traditional events and think about them in a whole new way, being a new person was a great part of um my initial onset, so we looked into, um, we pulled together Power Week and, and ran it in October, it was great. Um, we attended some community events, town days, farmers markets, et cetera. Um, we hosted our first, um, in my time here and that I know of, legislator roundtable in the fall, which was amazingly well-received. And we sponsored tree lightings, um, and we are looking at using these events and appearances uh more strategically than I've seen in the past, we specifically identify which programs we wanna promote. Um, Winter Fest was a great one, where we really pushed the heat pump um, and asked everyone that came to our table, had they heard about it, had, so you know, having the folks that are working with me know what we're trying to push. I love giving out our plastic helmets, but I also wanna make sure that the events are worth it and really communicating to our customers. Um, so the recommendations that came out of the event review was developing that, you know, some new program-specific events, like the heat pump is an example. Engaging more actively in some industry events like the NEPA and APA, um, I was able to perform my R two, participate in a panel um on social media in the fall, which was great, I got to meet Ray, who asked some really tough questions. Um, um, being more strategic in those events, as we mentioned, um, adding the legislator events. And then our current for our future will be the reviewing and restarting the rest of the R M the events. The bike swap, I did talk with um the folks um over email the last couple of days to get that moving, looking at possibly hosting an E V showcase again and other opportunities for events. I know that was a lot, so, questions?
Yeah, um, I, I have a couple. Um, and you answered most of the quiz questions I had in Eva, uh, very, very well, so you, you were approved, um, post higher by, by me then. Um, uh, as far as some of the networking, I don't know whether it comes under social media or events. Um, find ways to tie into other, um, community-friendly groups, the Climate Advisor Committee in Reading, uh, other town groups, I know Facebook kinda has algorithms where the more linkages you have, the, the better. Um, and, and I think those groups would echo a lot of the messages that we are putting out there about uh electrification, whatever, so I encourage finding ways to, to build around that.
Hmm.
Um, I, I don't see a conflict with the bike event also doing something that promotes electrification, I mean, I think in part we do the bike event, um, because you give us free water and air. But, um, but I, I had a big yard to do it, but, um, I mean, in part the bike event is so, you're not driving a car. Um, but I could see doing other things that talk about electrification or alternative energy as a part of that. Um, you know, plastic hats are great, but, um, you, you could add to that and, and, and have some other things there, rather than simply the, the bikes. Uh, Reading Police, um, outreach is there. Um, but I, I could see there being a, a properly targeted theme or, or messaging that, that uh would be compatible with that. Um, and yeah, I guess those were the, the two things.
That's a great thing.
Let me just add while I'm, I'm gabbing, nice to see you guys come, um, I mean, we love Greg, but, um, no, thank you for, for coming, we love to see you here at the table and hearing uh from you about what's your, your team's doing, so whether it's I R D or engineering or, or line, um, love to see, uh, team staff, team staff here.
Always great plus.
All right, good to see you guys. Don't be strangers, I guess is what I'm saying.
Um, question.
All right.
Move forward, yeah, next slide on.
Oh, one more, heavy-duty slide, so, um, another um evaluation um area was around the website. Um, looking, you know, there was a process in place when I arrived to update the brand and the website, and it was kind of stalled. And so we kind of took a step back and looked at what we needed to do to get that process moving again. Um, as we worked on the brand, which you will see shortly, we also looked at pulling um our view of the website, looking at the structure, looking at opportunities for clearer content, um, for our customers, so that when we are ready to reengage with Civic Plus, we are ready to hit the ground running. Um, we've also looked at some best practices, done some um site review, um, we, I use a tool called Page Speed Insights that looks at our accessibility, um, our page performance, et cetera, and we actually currently perform very well, so that we're being found. We have no accessibility issues, I think our worst score was performance and it was upper eighties, which is not a flag for me. Um, so I feel like we're in good shape to hold the current site and just continue to pick through, yes.
And this is one thing, the website's always out there, so it's the most visible part of R M L D to customers.
Hmm.
And I know, Craig, I pointed out sometimes there were some inconsistencies on the website.
Yep, in the process.
And other people have also pointed it out, so I just wanna make sure that, that is proper. If you ask me to list them, I, I can't list them right now, I'm sorry.
Part of the.
I, I don't remember, but I, I think we've shared them, I know Dave has shared them, and I'm sure others have also found some inconsistencies.
We, we're both fairly new, so we all found things that we were like, why, so we're working to.
So, so like everything, I mean, just don't assume anything that's up there is correct, just, just start with that premise.
We, yeah, we've been working through it a lot, there's, there's a lot of things happening behind the scenes, so.
Okay, yeah, no, no, it's just that, because that's the most public-facing part, and, and, yeah, because I know some, some public comments have been targeted to that point also then.
Yep, we're, we're on it, yeah.
Okay.
One of the things we looked at was how do we prepare the current content on the website for moving to um a new site once we reengage with Civic Plus? And we've, as, as we've mentioned a couple of pieces, Stephen, the Bill explaining, um, information is updating where we can, making sure things are correct, pulling down outdated information. Um, also looking at for future a distributed model of content review and accuracy, because having one person or two people responsible for all of the content on the website is not sustainable, so we have to have that in plan in place. Um, we need to focus some really, an action-based site map, we need to really decide how we want customers to interact with our website. Do we want them to use it to pay? Do we want them to find resources? What are the main pushes? And some of that structure is what we're gonna move forward on the new site. We've made small changes and try to get, as you mentioned, get as much of the content as accurate as we can currently. Um, and then as we move to the new site, we'll be looking at best practices, updating things like backend meta descriptions and contrast. Um, getting that new site implemented with the new site map and from my, where I said some analytics, because right now nothing is being watched and followed, so we can't really track too much behavior. Um, and then expanding using the web as a tool to be our public-facing site, to be able to push it out and have people act from it. So it is for sure one of my major priorities.
Right, and the other thing is, since you're, you're engaging with customers, uh, in the minutes from Sep- the September twenty-fourth meeting, there were two rec- two requests that were made. One was G I G emissions and so reporting, and this next one was net promoter score, N P S. And I think if we are talking to customers, it's really important to know how customers are receiving us. And Greg has accepted N P S as one of the metrics to report on for this year. And if you're primarily interfacing with customers, whoever, you know, and, and Greg said that the whole management team is gonna be owning this.
Well, there's a lot of people involved in it, yes.
Yeah, so, but, 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 I didn't see that listed under marketing, so I'm, I'm just bringing this up so that.
Look, Mark.
I, I, I just wanted to record it so that, you know, Melissa also, because if you're engaging with customers, you're surveying customers. I think it's really important, because I, I don't think customers have much of a choice, they, they, once you're a Reading customer, you can't move, but, you know.
It's true. But we, we still like to take care of them, yes, that's true. Keep going.
Um, and then the last um area that we focused in on was the outreach programs, things like the community events, the art contests um, and new program launches, like our connected homes or our rebates update or the heat pump program. Um, how do we approach those currently and how do we wanna move forward approaching those? Um, we did initially work on updating the art contest programs and outreach in their S O Ps. Um, and moving forward, we're looking at developing some new pieces, we are actively developing some safety resources for local emergency services, um, looking at exploring new school-based programming opportunities, developing resources for retailers and contractors and how they can work with us and or promote. Um, program-based resources like webinars and how-tos for our customers are on our list for spring. Um, developing resources for town officials and legislators as well, and how they, us can work with us, um, some of the events will fall in that category. And then exploring more tactics that we have used in the past, such as the phone tree messaging and bill inserts.
You see, right?
Questions on this? I am gonna toot our, our horn a little bit, Power Week was amazing, as I said, I had been here a hot minute and they were like, hey, here's our biggest event of the year, please do this. Um, I need to put kudos to the team here, I had a representative from each of the different functions within R M L D, they were an amazing crew. They brought me right in the fold, um, it was such a positive experience. Um, we had over seventy percent of our team volunteering and with three shifts, like that's a big deal. Um, we had, we already have ideas, I have people that still come to me, hey, for Power Week, we should do X. Um, and it's amazing to see the excitement, um, and all of the, the, the residents and some of the town administrators that attended that day, there was, it was a freezing day, we were so cold, but people still came out in droves, it was wonderful, so. And then another marketing highlight was the e-newsletter, it had been dormant for a couple of months, we took a hard look at it, we took a look at the metrics pri- prior to. And we wanted to be really cautious, if we have great responses in email, we don't wanna oversaturate, we don't wanna spam. Um, so we looked at pulling it back to quarterly, making sure it was chock full of information that was really timely to the things that are important to our customers. Looking for ways to save them money, access our services and other programs that are offered and available for them. Um, we had some, our initial one was in Septa- I was in, sorry, November. Um, we had a great sixty-five, sixty percent open rate, two and a half percent click rate, which is above industry averages and up from all previous. Um, a bounce rate was very low. And the big pushes, no surprise, were new programs that we had pushed out. Um, we've since done one in January and our next one will come in April. Um, and again, this makes us a lot easier for us to send those kind of one-off emails when we're having a program or an event or an announcement and not feel like we're flooding folks' boxes. Future, um, so in progress, the brand update that you're gonna see shortly, a full brand rollout, heat pump continued promotion. Um, we have a River Park ribbon-cutting event coming up in April, we have some community organization outreach, like the bike, um, swap and other pieces. Um, and we have some team growth, we're adding position and marketing, so it won't just be me trying to do all that stuff I just talked about. Um, and then spring and beyond, um, the website update, report a launch, program promotion, some segmentation and satisfaction surveys, additional webinars and workshops, social growth, S O P review, and one of my big goals is to have a yearly public events calendar, so folks can see where we're gonna be at if they wanna try to make a plan to connect us out in the world. Next questions on this overall before I move into brand and logo? Easy.
You, you want to, you got one more slide, I believe?
Moving on.
Go ahead.
One of the first initiatives that we um took on as I came on board was to look at the brand. Um, it was part of the initial um website project that I inherited coming in. That it kind of stalled, we had worked with Civics Plus and there just wasn't um some visual representations of the brand that we're meeting, what we felt like, we, how we wanted to put R M L D out into the world. Um, so we looked at, um, we're kind of reset, restart and pull this internal and see what we can do to move us forward. Um, we took a quick look at the current logo, what does it mean, what does it look like, how are we using it? Um, it hadn't been updated since nineteen eighty-seven. Um, it's tough to use in some small use cases like mobile and new media, um, you know, some, some other smaller applications. The icon though is positively viewed, people like it, they recognize it, they really recognize um and feel comfortable with it. Um, and R M L D was recognized by us moniker, I saw that right away out in the world as people came to our table, oh, it's R M L D, or, oh, you're from R M L D. And so really pushing that, so that was kind of what started us to look at. And then we also, you know, checked ourselves, how are we, why will we do this? What's our rationale? What's the point of, of pushing this forward? So we wanted to make sure R M L D is doing great things, the brand should represent that, it should feel distinctive, it should feel ownable. Um, it should represent that future, that mono-invaded brand that we wanna be, that. Um, it should represent that future, that mono innovative brand that we want to be, that we are creative, we're forward thinking and that we're constantly evolving. Um, we should be clear. We talked about being customer focused. It should not be confusing when they see our logo. They should know who we are and what we do right at the outset. And we want to leverage that strong history. We want to be respectful of that comfort that folks feel with us. Um, so with that, we'll develop a crisp, effective brand, represent the future of R M L D and clearly communicate what we do in a distinctive and eye catching way. Another part of this review, we did um a couple of different levels of, you know, kind of comparative analysis of visual logos and how folks were using their logos in this. You know, we called it the Where's Waldo of R M L D. Like if when you're looking at R M L D compared to other M L Ps, you know, similar. Impression, it just doesn't hold up. It receives, it feels light, it feels. Weak, for lack of a better word, and we don't want that to happen. We we know we are not that. We are strong and we are, you know, powerful and bold moving forward. So let's make sure the logo represents that. With that, I'll introduce where we landed for um a new R M L D logo and icon. Um, we wanted to pay respect to the to the light bulb and the idea of energy and light and very simply communicate and boldly to our customers who we are and what we do. We wanted to make sure it was crisp and distinctive in both the modern representation, representation of light and power as well as the bold, yet approachable font. Um, pulls that together. A refresh on the color palette, again, feeling, having us out in the field, thinking of our teams and our trucks and how they will be. Recognized and quickly scanned out in the fields. We wanted to make sure that we have um an ample amount of variations that its use across um different. Use cases is flexible, um, and that we're not reinventing it every time we need to push it through. Um. We wanted to give some flexibility around a seal and a tagline to again feel a little bit of that heritage. Um, as well as, you know, making footwork, pushing forward that reliable low cost and non carbon energy mantra that we have. We also wanted to test it and see how would it feel. Again, these are not by any means final designs, but you know, it sometimes feels. A little bit more comfortable to see how this would play out across different use cases, especially on the trucks. Um, you know, but having that flexibility within the logo set. And then we tested ourselves. Does it hold up? And it does, much stronger than the initial. Um, both the color palette, the boldness of the fonts, the uniqueness of the the icon, all feel much more aligned with where R M L D is going.
So you say, yeah, you say test it. What do you mean by test it? How how is?
From here, like against the other logo marks, you know, looking at our goal was to make it feel stronger. More distinctive and stand out. And now when I scanned this compared to if I had scanned the original.
So but by testing it, you mean you're simply you're.
Just.
Visual presence.
So you're not um using customer panels.
No, we haven't done a customer testing or A B C.
We had a internal focus group, and half of them are Reading residents.
Right, yeah.
The customers.
Customer focus group of one, me here. Um, we're still kind of stuck around an incandescent bulb.
Yeah, we had that discussion.
Yeah.
They did.
And um.
It seems the elephant.
I know, I know.
A lot goes in.
I know. So what do you use? A fluorescent or an L E D flicker? So yeah, I get it.
Yeah. Balance of the tradition versus in that. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it's more the connection to the fact that that everybody recognizes that.
I I know, you know, I went and I flipped back to the old one too and. And and while it looks like a bulb, you do see the incandescent reds on the bottom of it. Yeah, whereas it's a little more, little more prominent. He he, the other one was more radiant in terms of the the symbol of the bulb where this one looks um more. Uh, I don't know.
Well, one thing I will say is, when I flip through the pages with the prior logos, I didn't even realize that our prior logo was on the page.
Exactly.
And then I looked at this one. I was like, oh, great. They added it to the page. Oh, no, it was there before.
If you go to the new logo, if um L E D gets a blue light, if you get to too high in the um Calvin, so if you're five thousand gallons, you get a blue.
Didn't you say that?
Yeah.
Of course you did.
There could be another.
So what are the next steps to finalize?
They make everything's a little.
Again, yes.
Hands over my house.
So sorry to be a little bit redundant. So what will this cost?
Well, what, why don't we? Well, right, I think it's a big thing to change the logo. We we got one other item on the agenda tonight. I. I would say, let's, let's absorb the the new logo.
And I'll go to my last.
Yeah, no, no, no changes. I think it's important to, I think everyone take a look at it.
Oh.
You know, we're not approving anything. We're just.
We will need to approve it very soon. Yeah, to the extent we need to.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So my question is, what is it going to cost?
To rebrand it.
Yeah, no, because uh, because you've got to do a lot of changes, right? And I I remember that one of your early slides said. That the old icon was not scalable for small use cases. Correct. And for for mobile applications, I presume, right? And so is that the primary driver here?
Let's say key driver. Well, the big driver is the fact that it was that first page. When you're on a logo screen, you can't find us. And the problem is, is that our our logo is very long. Right? And so what we tried to do is make it tighter and square so that when we appear, again, we're, this is about branding and marketing. Are the R M L D, the R M L D name is recognized um as much as reading, if not more so. And so the intention was to try and is to shorten it and make it. More boxy, right? And then we went through, do we have a different silhouette? Do we have a different shape, et cetera? And went through all, we went through all sorts of. So to answer your question, there's a process we went through to ask you a question on cost. This is an internal effort.
Okay, no, so 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 that so that your question boils down to is. How much will the branding cost as percentage of your marketing budget? How much will it be as part of your marketing budget?
We haven't separated branding as the marketing budget. I was specific.
But but just, 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 it's just, it's just a sense. Is it, is it a small percentage of your marketing budget?
We, we didn't even identify it as being a, so yes, the answer to your question.
Okay, because at the end of the day, that's what matters. If it's a small cost, doesn't matter. If it's a significant cost of your marketing budget. Then, you know, you want to be. Responding timely in a timely way with customers, right? So so. So I I look at what marketing needs to be doing, and if this is a very small piece of what marketing needs to do, that's fine.
Yeah, just to kind of put a context, for example, we have to have the logo settled before we can move on with a civics class for the new website.
You have a logo, you have a logo right now, right?
Right, right, right. But then the sort of the color scheme, like we were going to have a brand new website, right? So what what is the the entire brand scheme? That's why we we did this internal effort to. Settle on a new logo and then the rest will follow. So everything that's electronic. Will almost be no cost, no extra cost. It's just our internal, you know, labor cost, right? That's already paid for. We were here to work. Um, but additional, like if we put something on the trucks, we're going to be rolling out whenever we need to replace them. For the most part, that's what we're going to do.
So essentially a soft rollout. You change as you have a need versus a hard cut over where you're creating.
You're not trying to.
The approach.
No, we did the local work internally because we weren't pleased with what was being proposed by the outside agency. And then we would work with Civic Plus to apply the new brands too. So we would do the brand guidelines development in house. We would do um the transition plan, the rollout plan in house as well. I've experienced doing those.
Okay, good. Thank you. I think you're.
Would it be possible to see it in just a couple of different color schemes? I know you're you're on this teal. Right? Is there a black? Is there a red? Is there a dark blue? Is it?
Part of your iteration.
Well, we we have seen those, right?
Even the original color, the original color you had, the original color, you don't like them.
We'll show it here. So this is, this is where you get it to the art of doing.
Yeah, no, no, I know, but but you're asking us to change something and.
Well, I'm not, you know, that's a, that's a good question. Sure. That's what I'm asking you guys to do. We'll come back to that next week.
I do.
Okay.
You can pick white and beige.
We actually have two, I know we'd like to adjust. We have two pieces of business that we do need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's good.
Let's get.
And and I'll be quick on those. So there is, um, so again, we talked before about the policy update stuff. Um, and so what.
Let's skip the policy. Let's table the policy. Table the policy. Let's get the procurement and I'll make a motion to table. Uh, item thirteen.
Just go to the back.
Okay, yeah, okay.
We can just go to fourteen, I don't know fourteen.
Yep, okay, fourteen's real simple.
Yeah.
Um, we have a a reapproval on um four pickup trucks. We're replacing for the pickup trucks. Um, it is in the uh, it's a three hundred and nine thousand dollar um event. It is against a budget item of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's less. Uh, we went through um uh a state arranged uh pricing as opposed to an internal bid. Um, we're trading in three of the four trucks, keeping the fourth truck. And we just need approval to move forward. Uh, because it it wasn't bid against the funds. It was basically sent out against a a state bid process. So there wasn't the same. So need approval, please, on uh RFQ. Oh, yeah, I'll say you did the motion, forgive me.
Let's get the motion, please. Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, move the RFQ twenty twenty five oh eight for four pickup trucks with three trade ins be awarded to Liberty Chevrolet for the net delivered price of three hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. Three hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and nine minus ten thousand for three trade ins. Pursuant to the town of Reading's membership for the career process, please counsel on the recommendation of the general manager.
Second.
So moving to second discussion. All to favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Right, it's thirteen. I think it's probably a good idea to hold that to the next meeting. When you have a, when you have the new member in place, because I think that's a more appropriate thing to do. I think about, okay, fifteen, you've got thirty seconds.
Great. Uh, the only thing I want to bring up, so there's more slides in there than your package. No, I I can do it.
Yeah.
The one, the one thing, thousand, one, thousand, two, thousand, three. The one thing that I do want to let you guys know is on the fourth, which is the A M I replacement program. Um, that we did execute the contract on uh March seventeenth. Uh, we issued the uh P O and so we're in process on that. Um, the other small piece is that as part of the. Uh, Station Six program, uh, probably at the May meeting, we'll do a more detailed update on both of these programs. Um, but uh, there is work on the site at Station Six, the uh two transformers, the first of the two transformers, physical act, physical activity uh relative to this project. Uh, those are the two key points of my update.
Greg was in the newspaper.
Yes, front page, front page.
Front page.
The front page of the Reading Chronicle.
Who was?
You were. The print version.
What did I do?
Color.
Good article.
Hometown news too. You make a hometown news.
Compress. That's my update. Thank you. Back to you, Phil.
Okay, so we got the scheduling.
Oh.
Yeah, you got the scheduling.
We're going to keep the scheduling in place. We can leave it.
Right, April sixteen. I'm sure you all will miss me.
Clearly, but.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk.
Actually, I I got notice that I should be, I attend those meetings, but on the story. And then following after that is May, that May the twenty ninth. And then we've got the warrant schedule, everybody. Okay.
Do you want to do the twenty third instead of the sixteenth in August? I don't know why we would move it to the second week.
Uh, because I'm not here.
Okay, that's a good reason.
I'll just April vacation week to.
Uh, three good reasons.
It's three weeks away.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be real short.
Well, they're not.
Well, um, I will, I'm sorry, I've got a personal issue that I I will not be able to have a long meeting that night.
Right.
The primary objective will be reorganizing the board and we'll try to do one other agenda item.
Right, that'd be the main one.
That's why the the fuller one will be May.
Okay.
So should we make it on the Thursday night then, Greg, if you have a problem that night?
Uh, I. No, let's keep it on Wednesday. That for that, maybe we can squeeze another one in as necessary, but I.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I I'm using update.
Well, if you can't be there, Greg, I mean, maybe we need a different night.
David's just, uh, yeah, I'll send you guys an email with the update. Um, I've got to take care of of a family. Surgery. Not mine.
All right.
Do you want to start the meeting a little earlier then, like five thirty or five?
Nope, six o'clock's perfect. Everybody's on. We'll just, thank you for the adjustments and thank you for the flexibility, but we'll just leave it as it is. I think we spent a lot of time trying to find that date when we did it last time. But thank you. My apologies. Back to you, Chuck.
Okay, anything else? So if not, then.
Move that the R M L D sort of advisory board going in regular session. Second.
I'm.
Phil, you should do the motion.
I will move that the R M L D Board of Commissioners adjourn the regular session.
Okay.
One favor.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah.
Congratulations, Phil. Enjoy your party.
Hey, thank you for joining on the late night. Thank you.
It's always a good time. Thanks, all. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Enjoy the party.